I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warman's July fifteenth regular council meeting. Under announcements, does anybody have anything they would like to announce? I would like to send condolences on behalf of Mayor, Council, and the City of Warman to the Braun family with the passing of Catherine Braun. Catherine has been a longtime resident of Warman. She's been a leader in our community and a volunteer, and she passed away on Saturday, so we do send her condolences up to the family. Okay, approval of agenda. Motion, please. Brian?
Make the motion to approve the agenda for July fifteenth, two thousand nineteen regular meeting of council.
Do we have a second or a third? Counselor Peterson? Any additions? Okay, all in favor? Okay, approval of minutes, please. Counselor Philchuck?
I'd like to make the motion. The Committee of the Whole minutes held on June seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, regular meeting of council held on June twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, as well as the Committee of the Whole meeting held on July eighth, two thousand nineteen. Be taken as read in our docket.
Okay, thank you. Secondor, Counselor Beck? All in favor? Okay, now we're about to go into public hearing to convene the motion to do so. Counselor Beck?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion to go into the public hearing to consider bylaw two thousand nineteen eleven, and that is bylaw to amend bylaw two thousand eighteen dash zero six, the zoning bylaw.
Okay. Secondor for that? Counselor Philchuck, all in favor? Okay, is there anyone here to speak to the bylaw? Hearing nothing, we will go back into our regular meeting, and we'll start with administration reports, planning and development.
Thank you, Mayor Spence, members of council. A couple of items for discussion tonight. The first is the zoning bylaw updates, bylaw two thousand nineteen dash eleven. Since adoption of our new zoning bylaw in two thousand eighteen, planning and development has been keeping a running list of updates that would be recommended to council at a later date. This is typical and usually happens every couple of years with major updates or process type changes coming in five-year cycles. The bylaw is now advertised for two consecutive weeks. The public hearing was held at this meeting. Planning and development has heard no comments or concerns from the public. After further research and the discussion that happened at the last council meeting, we've removed the section amending the advertising distance for discretionary uses from seventy-five meters. The reason we removed it completely is because it's already a hundred meters in the bylaw, so if we're not amending it, there's no need for it to be in the bylaw. So the recommendation tonight is that council follow through with the second and third reading of bylaw two thousand nineteen dash eleven.
Okay, can I have a motion for second reading? Counselor Philchuck?
I'd like to make the motion that bylaw two thousand nineteen be read a second time.
Okay, is there any comments there? Secondor, please. Counselor Schramm, any comments? Okay, all in favor? Motion to have their final reading. Counselor Schramm?
I will move that the bylaw two thousand nineteen dash eleven, the bylaw of amendments, to the bylaw two thousand eighteen dash zero six, known as the zoning bylaw. All the amendments are minor in nature and do not change the intent of the zoning bylaw or any of the districts. Be read a third time and passed in the bylaw two thousand nineteen dash eleven. Be now adopted, sealed, and signed by the mayor and city clerk.
Good, thank you. Do we have a secondor for that? Counselor Beck, is there any comments? Okay, all in favor? Good, thank you.
Thank you. The second item for discussion tonight is our pavement management contract. Annually, the city does regular road maintenance on areas that have failed due to high water table or age of pavement. Budget varies year to year and depends on a number of factors. Public, on a typical year, public works, planning and development, and the city engineer do a tour of the city, once frost is out of the ground to identify areas that have failed or are in the process of failing. These areas are surveyed, a tender document is created, which is then advertised publicly for two weeks on SaaS tenders. Amount of the areas being recommended for repair has been attached for council's information. Three companies bid on the project this year with a low bid being Paramount Paving at one hundred ninety-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine twenty-one. The other two companies that bid were significantly higher. Paramount Paving has done a number of projects in the city in the past, and administration has full confidence in them to complete the project. The amount include, also includes paving, I guess a special sector of the tender includes some paving in front of the public workshop that's currently gravel. This is being done to help with road maintenance when it rains or other things with the amount of traffic that happens in front of the public workshop. A lot of gravel is taken onto the street, and we feel that it'd be a benefit to pave this, especially due to the pricing this year. So the recommendation tonight is that council award the contract for the pavement management to Paramount Paving for a bid price of one hundred ninety-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine twenty-one.
Okay, motion, please. Counselor Peterson?
I'd like to make the motion that the contract for pavement management is awarded to Paramount Paving for a bid price of one hundred ninety-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-one cents.
Do we have a secondor for that? Counselor Philchuck, any comments? Okay, all in favor?
Yeah, I, again, I'm asking a little bit about the price differential. Any, anything that's missing that, like, I saw what A O, or A O D B T, or AECOM gave as recommendation, but it just seems like such a discrepancy in percentage-wise.
Yeah, it sometimes just depends, especially because this tender document comes out a little later in the year in terms of who has a number of jobs or enough work to kind of carry through through the season. There's no differences in the bids in terms of the work that would be done or the quality of work. Everything's been specked out, so it's fairly clear in terms of what will be fixed and how the fix would be. And the price that Paramount Paving gave us was pretty close to the price that A ECOM had estimated originally, so we feel confident in the bid.
Brad, I just would like to know, is, who's responsible for communicating to the public when these repairs are taking place?
Yeah, so we've, we've grown in this regard in the last number of years. Typically, what happens is, in the smaller type jobs where maybe one driveway is affected, the contractor will actually do a visit to the house the day prior to the work. When we've got bigger sections of roadway where the road may be closed for a day or two, we typically do notice on our website and letters out to the affected area, the affected residents within the closure.
Will there also be vehicle signs put up? If it's...
In terms of, like barricades, that type of thing, yeah. Yeah, there'll be, the barricades put up to show if a road's been closed. And in terms of notifying the public, if it's a, if it's a larger arterial or a busier street, we'll use the message board signs in anticipation of the work. So if the work's happening, say, on a Monday, we typically put the message board sign out on the Friday, just so that people are ready for it when they come back on Monday to do their commute.
Anything else? Counselor Peterson?
Just in respects to what we had budgeted, just remind me again what we have budgeted in, because normally we budget about seven hundred and fifty thousand for...
Yeah, and we've actually, we've taken the number down to six hundred thousand. There's still a bit of a discrepancy in terms of what the bid was comparatively to what the amount was budgeted. In the last couple of years, just due to the slowdown in the economy, we have seen the pricing come down considerably, so we are getting a lot more work done for the amount of money that we're paying. That being said, it's always a bit of a, you know, dart-to-dartboard type situation in terms of predicting the amount of work that will have to be done after the winter season's done. There's a lot of factors, you know, the water table, the type of winter we have in terms of frost, those types of things, and we never quite know what kind of failures we're going to have in the spring. So there's a little bit of cushion put in that number. And in addition, even though right now the contract is that one hundred ninety-four seven fifty-nine, we typically, there is typically some add-ons to that over the year if other failures come up or different areas where, for example, last year we added the dog park parking lot after, after the numbers came back and we had, we had budget room left to spend on that. So even though right now it looks like there's a pretty big discrepancy between what we're, we're spending in terms of what we budgeted, I think at the end of the day, it'll come out a lot closer. And, like I said, we're getting a lot more work done for the, for the price.
Okay, anything else? Okay, all in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sidney, now?
Thank you, worship. I have two items for tonight. Community standards bylaw and also some looking for an increase to the budget for the lake fountains. The loitering and community standards bylaws, council's request, the loitering community standards bylaw was advertised in the local paper and on our website for the past two weeks, asking residents for feedback on the implementation of bylaw. There were very few responses provided to the city, with only some inquiries related to how the bylaw may affect individuals' special needs or special circumstances. Also, there was a few comments on Facebook about the bylaw possibly going too far with clauses pertaining to spitting on the property, those were what we received or heard of. There was also some comments in regards to some clerical errors which have been corrected. Overall, very few responses were provided. So we're looking for bylaw to be given second and third reading at this meeting.
Okay, so can I have the motion for second reading? Counselor Schramm?
I would like to move that bylaw two thousand nineteen dash zero nine be read for a second time.
Do we have a secondor for that? Counselor Beck, discussion? Counselor Peterson?
I do believe I had sent in a comment about this, but I do want to propose a amendment to this. Right now, we've got peace officer, officers defined as bylaw officer or RCMP. In Saskatchewan, a peace officer can also include things like the conservation officers and highway patrol. Basically, I'm, what I'm proposing is that we define peace officer as what the problems defines it. That way, we're not limiting who can do enforcement within our boundaries.
Is there any comments to that?
We, we did pass it on to our solicitor for comment, but we hadn't heard anything back. That's who drafted the definition for us.
I guess I just asked the question, so, like, would, does, would a conservation ever have the ability within the City of Warman to enforce our bylaws? And would we want them to? And we have a contractor, the RCMP, and we have a hired staff under, under our bylaw officers, so I'm just...
There are some ti, it might not necessarily be a conservation officer, but there are times when the RCMP, for example, do enforcement with other, other jurisdictions, like the City of Saskatoon, or it might be Carmen Park officers or, or whatever, and if we've limited it in, in our bylaw, that might, I don't know, but it might preclude them from doing that. I just don't see why we would limit it in our bylaw.
Counselor Beck?
Yeah, just a procedural question on that. If we're going with the provincial definition, does that mean that the, the stated definition within the document should just be removed? So therefore, we shouldn't really amend that, we should actually remove it? So then, I guess that'd be a friendly amendment to what's being proposed. Obviously, if, if that would be, you know, supported, you know, let's say around the table. But I guess just from a procedural standpoint, I think that would be the, the proper way, you know, to do that if we're taking the provincial.
Okay, let's go to the member.
I'd be okay with that. Whatever, basically, I'm just looking for not to limit us with this bylaw.
Do we have a secondor for that?
I think I moved it, so I'm the one that's really...
No, I didn't.
But he, but if he's making a motion for amending it, that would be different. We haven't really got to that part yet. So if you're making a movement on the amendment, we have to go that direction first.
Okay.
Yeah, so obviously, I didn't catch you off guard on this one here, but with this year, just to, what are your thoughts on, on the, on the definition of this officer?
Well, I usually leave it up to the solicitors to, that's their advice. If that's what they put in for the wording, that's normally what I would concede to. I guess it became a problem in the, in the future. We could amend it if there was other bylaw enforcement agencies that we would contract with to do this type of stuff, then may require amendment. I'm not even sure if it would require amendment from a peace officer to include or not to include. But again, I didn't receive anything back from, from our solicitor regarding the email that Counselor Peterson had sent to me. I forwarded it off to, to our solicitor for comment, but I didn't receive anything back. But I, so I guess from, from my perspective, that's the wording that the solicitor provided, so I wouldn't go any further than that.
Okay, so, any other comments?
Just, I'm not sure, your worship, if you want him to make the motion, and then with that deletion, because we're, we're still stuck with the original motion, so...
Well, I guess my, my question would be, how hard, if, if we get like a week down the road and Candace comes back, that would be a good, a good change to make. How hard is it to make that change the next meeting?
You'd give three readings to amendment to the, to the bylaw.
So not hard at all. Okay, well, then let's leave it as is and wait for this listener to comment back, is what would be my thought then. But just, I did want to bring it up, but that's, you know, because it was mentioned to me by a resident that that's, that's something that they noticed.
Okay. Any other comments?
I just have a comment about the spitting aspect, and, and I, you know, I'm fine with it being there, but I, I, I guess I want to make sure that the spirit of it is, is the intent, because it can be in so many different, different types of things, whether it's baseball or whether it's whatever other activities. And so I think, I think by having it in there, it does cause some challenges if it's, if it was something that was enforced beyond. And, and I don't see it as being something that would go that way, but I want to make sure that that's said right out front, that in the spirit of it, it is something that is being in disrespect, definitely disrespect. But I think if we were ever trying to prove something like that, we definitely need something like that, too, so.
Absolutely, and, and I, I think we have to go on that premise that it's going to be in, you know, out of disrespect, same as your donation to parks and the comments where if you had a toddler, and I don't, I don't suspect, I suspect that there's going to be some common sense, and there always is with bylaws and with any other law, that common sense would have to prevail. If it didn't, they'd probably lose in court anyways, so. But I can't, you know, it, it is in there. If you take it out, then even out of disrespect, you, you know, or...
That's why I don't want to remove it. But that's, that's where I come from, too, is that...
Yeah, that's kind of the, the, it's not like, well, let's say, not stopping at a stop sign or something. Chances are, if you don't stop at a stop sign, you're going to get ticked. Well, you may not, actually, but, you know, if there was a certain circumstance, you probably wouldn't.
Right.
Speeding, if you can, you know, so I think that they have it in there for those that, I guess, certainly be abusing the, the parks and that's where it's...
Well, that's it, okay.
Counselor Beck?
Yeah, you know, and I suppose, you know, just to kind of build off of, you know, Gary's question, is, you know, certainly this year, I mean, you know, this was, you know, like a document kind of created from, from discussions, you know, with our RCMP, you know, to certainly be able to, you know, to strengthen some of the bylaws that we do have. And this is the tool that they had certainly come back with, right? And, you know, looking at our past history, we haven't had any, any enforcement issues or criticisms on that particular front, so I don't know. I mean, certainly for me, like, I do feel confident in, in moving forward with, with what's here. Obviously, if you take it word for word literal, you know, with this year, you could be like, oh, you know, like it's, you know, let's say like the nanny state coming in. But, you know, certainly with this, you know, I mean, all of our, our bylaw and, and our CMP enforcement has been, you know, you know, let's say upstanding. So I'm certainly confident moving ahead.
Okay, any other comments to the motion for second reading on the floor? All in favor? Okay, third and final reading motion, please. Counselor Beck, secondor? Oh, sorry.
I'll make the motion that bylaw two thousand nineteen dash zero nine, the City of Warman Community Standards bylaw, being a bylaw to regulate and prohibit certain activities in order to prevent and compel the, the abatement of noise, nuisances, unsightly premises, public disturbances within the City of Warman, be read a third time and passed. And bylaw two thousand nine, written, pardon me, bylaw two thousand nineteen dash zero nine now be adopted, sealed, signed by the mayor and city clerk.
Okay, do we have a secondor for that? Counselor Schramm, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Thank you.
The next item I have is regarding fountain at Crystal Springs Lake, but also some other information that's come to us since then. The fountain on our storm retention pond were taken out of storage this year, maintained and moved back onto the lakes on May second. Unfortunately, when the fountains were placed, the light, one of them, the lights didn't work, therefore, we required, inquired of a company, the cost to fix light, it was four thousand dollars. And we also checked to see what the cost of a new one was, because these ones are fourteen years old for, and it was an estimate of fourteen thousand dollars. Our concern at the time was we could put the new lights on and the pumps could fail. Also, is the, all of the pumps are the same brand and horsepower. We felt that by replacing with a new fountain, it would provide us the ability to have a backup pump for the other fountains, the other five fountains. As a result, we ordered a new fountain for the lake. As this was not a budgeted expenditure, the manager of finance has advised that a resolution of council would be required to increase the capital budget for the new pump. And then, although not related to this request, however, will require a budget increase in the future for more fountain, we will be also acquiring, requiring a budget increase of sixteen thousand dollars for upgrades to the fountains that will be placed at Tradition Lakes, three pumps. Cage Developments have advised that they will be ordering fountains for the lakes this year, and the size of the pump will be one horsepower, which is quite a bit smaller than the five horsepower pumps that we have in the other lakes. As a result, we did inquire of the company, and they advised that the three-point-five horsepower pump should be sufficient at the Traditions Lake. The price difference for the three of them was sixteen thousand dollars for the total of all three pumps. As we were increasing the budget to accommodate the replacement of the fountain, I would hope that city council would consider increasing the budget for both expenditures, Crystal Springs replacement fountain for fourteen thousand dollars, and the upgrades to the three Traditions fountains at sixteen thousand dollars for a total increase to the fountain budget of thirty thousand dollars, contingency reserve, which presently is at three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so we have a recommendation of none of us. Who wants to make that motion? Counselor Jones?
Move that the two thousand and nineteen capital budget be increased by thirty thousand dollars to allow for the purchase of a fountain for Crystal Springs Lake at fourteen thousand dollars, and the upgrade of the three fountain pumps for Traditions Lake together at sixteen thousand dollars. Further, that the funds to pay for the capital expenditure come from the contingency reserve.
Do we have a secondor for that? Counselor Philchuck, and is there further discussion? Counselor Schramm?
Yes, I did send, one of my questions wasn't answered, and that was life expectancy of the pumps and warranty. So, so I'm just curious as to what that is.
Well, the lights, I guess fourteen years. The pumps, though, I don't, like, it could, we could have a pump fail after five years, you could have a pump fail after fifteen years, twenty years, but I would suspect the life expectancy wouldn't be any more than what we have right now. Fifteen years would be...
So I, I guess, my, my question is, if the, is the issue having bigger pumps, or is the issue with trying to deal with the algae in...
Oh, you're talking for the Traditions? Sorry, I was talking about the replacement for the crystal.
Well, I, there was, because you were changing from one horsepower to three-point-five, and I'm just curious as to, if you're increasing, is, is the issue the increase of horsepower or is the, the problem algae? And if, are we putting money into something that we're going to get the same life expectancy than maybe dealing with the problem by algae rather than by pump?
Yeah, so in regards to the, the three pumps in the Traditions, so the one horsepower is basically for aesthetics. In talking to the company, they have said that, you know, one horsepower would, you're, you'd maybe have three feet of, you know, three-point-five, maybe five feet of spray, and then five horsepower would be eight feet of spray. So that's one. So from aesthetics perspective, that's one issue. The other issue is that from Jason had talked to the supplier regarding their, their concern about the one horsepower, is that the algae, because it also does help aerate the, and so that it would be, you'd have a better product and less maintenance on a, on a three-point-five than it would be a, a one. So you're going to see more algae build up more often on a one, just because it's just not putting through the same volume.
I'm, I was just wondering about spending the, if you're getting the same life expectancy of one to three, and then really, are we spending the money in the right place if algae's the problem, but aesthetics is just as important at times than, you know, algae?
Yeah, again, the company that I spoke to had said that you'd see a significant difference between a one and a three-point-five as far as between, like, if somebody drove by Crystal Springs and saw what was there compared to if you had a one, there would definitely be a significant difference in the aesthetics or the symmetry.
Okay.
Just, so if we, do we have a three-point-five in Crystal Springs to begin with?
Five.
We have a five, and we're going to three-point-five, and then we have a one, three ones in Traditions.
No, so there's a five in, in Crystal Springs, and all the other ones that we have right now are five horsepower. And so the one that we're replacing with a five horse. And the pumps, the reason we did that, all the pumps are the same, so that if we replace one, we have a backup. The, when it comes to the ones in the Traditions, they're brand, they're brand new, they're provided by the developer. The developers indicated that, you know, the one, they got the one horsepower. We checked the three-point-five and the five. Unfortunately, when you go to a five horsepower, you need a significant thicker gauged power cable, which almost doubles the cost. So from the three-point-five and the length it's got to go, to go to a five horse, the, the gauge of the wire had to be increased significantly. So that's why we went to...
My, my question really is just around how the difference in the requirements, I guess, from the old one, which seemed like the right pump, to a very small pump in the Traditions, that's all.
Yeah, that was just the, that's what the developer was going to provide in there, and when we found out that that's what the horsepower was going to be, we asked for...
Yeah, I guess that's my, my question is, so it's our sixteen thousand dollar cost to get the right pump in there as opposed to part of the development, putting the right ones in in the first place?
Correct.
Yeah, that's just, I guess for future, that we, you know, that we ask for the right pumps to be in the pump. That's all.
Counselor Beck, say?
No, I was just gonna ask Brad if there, I don't think we have anything in the agreement of the size of pumps that are required to be put into the lakes, or even if there's...
No, we don't even, we have requirements, but they don't specify the size of the pump.
Okay, but that's something we can...
It's typically just been used for more aesthetic purposes, but as the storm retention ponds get bigger, it's a little more important to move a little more water. So definitely a discussion that we can have with the developers moving forward. In this particular case, these lakes are some of the bigger ones that we've kind of ever constructed, and they hold a lot more water than typical, so I think the larger pumps, I guess, for a little, I guess the size and the amount of water that we need to move is a bit more surprising than we thought, just because of the newness of the lakes and the size.
Okay, Counselor Beck?
Yeah, so the motion here certainly deals with capital side of things. With this year on the operation side and whatever, we have enough contingency to, you know, to let's say incorporate with the increased horsepower into, into what we already have, right?
Yes, perfect.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor of the motion? Thank you. My next manager.
Good evening, Mayor Spence and Council. The first item I have in my report are the updates to the HR policy. The first policy that has been updated is the annual vacation policy. And the amendment to this policy is, is such that accrued vacation time or banked overtime or EDO time must be taken first prior to unpaid leave. Day-to-day unpaid time will not be processed while employees have accrued vacation, bank time, or EDO time in their bank. The next update made was to the benefits policy. The intention changes to this policy are that when the acting manager, acting department manager pay comes into effect, initially, an acting manager was entitled to an extra ten percent in pay if appointed for three or more consecutive working days. However, it has been determined that if the absence of the manager does not exceed a week, generally, there is no additional responsibility put upon the employee. The change in the policy now states that from greater than one week to less than one month, the acting manager will be granted an additional ten percent of their regular pay, and more than one month, the acting manager will be compensated within the pay range of the managers whose role they are acting within. And more than one month, the acting manager will be compensated within the pay range of the managers whose role they are acting within. Another amendment to this policy was within the sick leave, uh, benefit area. It has been extended to include the earning of sick leave credits for part-time employees. Time earned is per rated to be earned at the same rate as a full-time employee at one day per month. It is common practice for part-time employees to earn sick leave as well as full-time employees. A section has also been added to the policy capping the maximum time employees can use from their sick bank for medical or dental appointments at two hours. Additional time for specific circumstances, such as specialist appointments, may be approved at the discretion of the city manager. The next policy that was updated was the corrective action policy, and this included additions to the minor misconduct definition to include smoking in prohibited places, absences from assigned work without permission, using profane or abusive language during working hours, failure to use reasonable care with the city's equipment and property, and deliberate loitering on the job. There were also additions made to the definition of the major misconduct to include introduction of alcohol or drugs on city property or being under the influence of drugs or alcohol during working hours, driving or operating city vehicles or equipment while under the influence of drugs or alcohol, deliberately delaying productivity or enticing other employees to do the same, conducting oneself in a way that discredits the employer in the eyes of the public or other employees, failure to observe safety regulations, operating city vehicles or equipment without permission, and violation of the confidentiality and code of ethics policy, the violence in the workplace policy, or the social media and electronic communications policy. The next amendment made was to the early return to work program, and this was to increase, uh, an employee who was absent for three or more consecutive days. It was what the policy initially was. This has been increased to ten days, may be required to provide metal, medical documentation supporting their ability to return to work. A long story, I said that backwards. It initially was ten days, we moved, changed it to three days, uh, may be required to provide medical, uh, documentation supporting their ability to return to work. The next amendment made was to the educational support policy, and this amendment was, uh, to state that if a, if an, if employment with the city is terminated prior to six months following completion of the education program, the employees must reimburse the city for one hundred percent of the educational costs. Amendments to the employee dress code policy include jewelry safety for employees working with electricity, moving equipment machinery, and around chemicals, as well as that if an employee wishes to promote an event, wearing a T-shirt displaying information, per permission must be obtained by the city manager. Amendments were made to the employee recognition policy. Uh, the amendments to this policy are that in the event of the death of an employee or elected official, the city will arrange to send flowers or a gift to the family of the deceased, together with a personalized message from the city manager. At the next council meeting, the mayor will acknowledge the employee or elected official in their years of service. The family of the deceased will be invited to attend. The city provides survivor benefits, uh, to dependents of the deceased within one year following the death, as well as a section, uh, for retirement, stating that the city will officially recognize an employee who is retiring through a celebratory event with a gift, provided the employee is fifty years of age or older, and has worked for the city for a minimum of fifteen years of continuous service. The value of the gift should be proportional to the lengths of, length of service, as stated below. Fifteen to nineteen years, a plaque and a gift of a hundred and fifty dollar value. Twenty to twenty-five years, plaque and gift of two hundred dollar value, and over twenty-five years, plaque and gift of two hundred and fifty dollar value. The city will host a retirement event, which can be a reception, coffee party, buffet, luncheon, or other social gathering to mark the retirement of the employee. All employees and members of council will be invited to attend. The next amendment made was to the harassment policy, and this was just to bring definitions and wording in line with standards, including the Saskatchewan Employment Act and the Saskatchewan Human Rights Code. The intention of this policy has not changed. The leave of absence policy was adjusted to allow employees granted an unpaid leave of absence to continue their benefits during their leave if they make arrangements in advance for payment of the employee-paid premiums. This is a practice currently in place, but not written in policy. There were also additions of crime-related, uh, child death or disappearance leave, interpersonal violence leave, and critically ill adult care leave, as leaves that will be granted in accordance with the Saskatchewan Employment Act. Performance management, uh, the intention, there were changes, there are wording changes that did not change the intention of the line items. However, some changes to the policy that did change intention are, under guidelines, supervisors are encouraged to ask employees to complete a self-evaluation form, as well as that feedback from two peers, one chosen from the employee and one chosen from the supervisor, may be included, included with the employee's performance review. Within the recruitment and selection, uh, section, the following, uh, amendments were made. No two members of the same family shall be employed in situations where one exercises line authority over the other. For any exceptional circumstances, prior approval must be granted by the city manager. As well as employees are required to have successfully completed their probationary period before their application will be considered for a different position in the organization. Within the Employment Status Act, there were just some wording changes to amend the number of probationary days to one hundred and eighty days, which is the current practice, within the classifications and definitions section under probation and permanent full-time. Administration recommends that the above amendments to the HR policy be approved at this regular meeting of council.
Yeah, I bet you do need to think that. Do you guess? Okay, do you have a motion please? Counselor Schramm?
I want to move that the amended smite to the HR policies be approved and adopted by council.
Do you have a second for that? Counselor Jones, do we have some questions? Counselor Schramm?
Um, just a couple, and that is, um, how, when a employee wants to wear a T-shirt to promote an event to get your approval, sir, um, becomes, is that, is that possible? Because I know sometimes events take place within one or two days. It feels like it's, um, a little bit of a, what's the word I wanna use? Kind of a stretch to have, to go to you, or should it be more to the, to their man, to their, their manager rather than the city manager?
Right now, the way our policy reads, um, employees are not allowed to wear such
Okay.
um, clothing. Um, if we wanted to change it to, um, the department manager, we could. I think just with it being the city manager, it makes things, um, fair across all departments, I guess, for all employees. Uh, if you have one manager, one person making the decisions.
Okay, uh, the second question is the flowers to, uh, to staff and to council. What, do we have HR policy for past employees that have worked for the city? Is that part of this, or is it in a different place?
Who has passed away, is that what you're referring to?
Yes, and so we have someone now, uh, currently, Catherine Broad, who served many years on our, uh, cemetery committee. Uh, looked after the cemetery with her husband. According to this, then we wouldn't be sending any flowers to the family. So I, I guess, I'm, I'm just wanting clarification as to following this through to the letter.
You're correct, that right now it would not include former employees. Um, I guess possibly the risk in doing that would be that council or imp- management might not be made aware of a circumstance like that at times.
True, I just, I don't wanna have any, like, someone who's obviously spent many years serving our community is now forgotten. I, I would hate that to happen, so.
Counselor Jones? Uh, Counselor Jones.
Smith Jones. I, I guess maybe to try to answer the question is, so from the policy perspective, this is, it's about existing poli- uh, employees that are here. Anything outside of that, I think if council wishes to, that certainly would be a council direction that they would do themselves. Um, and, and whether that's, can be through public relations or, but probably wouldn't be in this policy, I would suggest.
I mean, I would, the question is, is why, if that is, can that be done somewhere else, which you've answered? And why, I'm asking why it isn't in there, because I don't want that type, that type of sec- or that type of service to be, um, not recognized or remembered. Because it is important.
Okay, so.
But I, I got the que- I got the answer.
So it's just a motion of council, I'm sure, do, do check. Okay, any other comments? Counselor Beck?
Uh, certainly, I'm like, the amount of work to, you, you know, that certainly went into this to, you know, to make sure that all of the, uh, like, the definitions were correct and also, you know, to bring everything up to date to, you know, to current standards, certainly fantastic job. When this was presented to us, um, just a couple, actually just last week, um, at the all-community meeting, we did also have the employee handbook, you know, let's say included in that, and I noticed that that's absent in this. Is that, is that something that's still being worked on?
No, it is actually complete, but it's just kind of, it's a compilation of the policies that are approved by council, so I didn't bring that document for approval by council.
Okay, yeah, yeah, so like, there again, like, everything from here will still go into there, and that's still gonna be created, but it doesn't have to be formulated policies.
Exactly, yes.
Fantastic, thank you very much, and I think the work that you did on this was fantastic.
Thank you, thank you.
Same with our, our HR.
Yes, I will pass it along to her, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, motion on the floor, all in favor? Okay, thank you.
The next item I, sorry, the next item I have is the employee satisfaction survey. A draft twenty nineteen employee satisfaction survey for council review has been, uh, included in appendix M. The attached survey has been revised from the previous year in order to provide better information regarding the level of satisfaction of employees. Uh, overall, in the prior year, results of the employees' survey were positive and indicate that employees are generally happy working for the city of Warman. On average, seventy-eight percent of all responses answered questions with agree or higher, and three percent of responses were disagree or lower, with the remainder neutral. Administration recommends the survey is approved for dispersment to all permanent city of Warman employees at this regular meeting of council.
Okay, do we have a motion? Counselor Peterson, secondaire Counselor Philchuck, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Oh, do you have a question?
I don't know.
Yes.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the twenty nineteen employee satisfaction ser- survey for dispersment to all permanent city of Warman employees.
Okay, all, all in favor? Was he due for question?
No.
Okay, he seconded it. Okay, all in favor? That's everything, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's creation. Still on duty, are you?
Yes, he was back for a few days and now he's gone again, so. Uh, good evening, mayor and council. I have brought forward to you two items tonight. The first one being the accessible playground project, RFP. Um, as had asked about at committee of the whole, we have brought forward a little bit more information regarding the RFP. It did indicate that the city reserves the right to accept an RFP on whole or in part deemed most favorable in the interests of the city, and that the lowest or any RFP prices may not be necessarily be accepted. I did contact a number of organizations, Saskability's Council, Camp Easter Seal, City of Prince Albert, Saskatchewan Parks and Recreation Association, and Saskatoon Health Region. Uh, speaking to Saskability's councils, they will not make a recommendation such as this, and they would actually relay or rely on the work of the organizations to kind of recommend what they would suggest. Same as Camp Easter Seal, they also said they would reach out to other organizations and to the companies, um, who are doing these. Speaking to the city of Prince Albert, they put in a large accessible playground. They internally decided what they were going to pick based on the budget that they had. They did not source out to any other organizations as well. I got a bit of a, some information back from Saskatchewan Parks and Recreation Association's facility, um, community consultant. The information he kind of, uh, alluded to me was basically kind of the same stuff. What space do you have? Uh, what do you want? Make sure there's a ramp. Make sure when you get to an area, they have different kind of areas to go in. And ours that we did, uh, recommend does have two kind of areas you can go when you get to the top of the round, that there are some, um, items to play with along the way. Um, but other than that, and to make sure that the swing is in there, he really liked the glider swing that's in there and things like that. So based on all the information that I've received, and Saskatoon Health Region has not gotten back to me. So based on the information I received, I feel confident and comfortable in the playground that we have, uh, recommended for you guys.
Okay, so the re- recommendation in front of us, Counselor Philchuck?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the RFP from one-stop playground for the supply and install an accessible playground with a pour-in-place, uh, rubber fall zone as their RFP.
Okay, secondaire, Counselor Peterson, is there any, uh, discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, next item?
Uh, second item I'm bringing forward to you for tonight is the Brian King Center Emergency Generator. Um, discussion back with, uh, Paul, and through with Bob, uh, we still recommend that we go forward with the repairs on it.
Okay, so we have a recommendation in front of us. Motion please? Counselor Jones?
Move to approve the pricing from DSG at a cost of nine thousand seven hundred eleven dollars plus applicable taxes to repair the Perkins generator at the Brian King Center.
Do you have a second for that? Counselor Philchuck, is there some discussion?
Actually, I have some ques- uh, question about the last one. I, 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 what's the estimated time that that will be completed, the accessible playground?
Um, it will be in, I believe, by the middle of October is what they're anticipating, but it will be this year, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Anything else? Counselor?
Oh, yeah, um, certainly when, uh, when we did actually discuss the, uh, like, the generator, uh, this year, I think we had a personal guarantee that, you know, that Paul was gonna guarantee that there was gonna be no more issues with the studio. So based on that, I'm prepared to move the repairs.
Any other comments? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you.
I'm sure to pass that one, but I'll pass that one.
Fire chief.
If you get some personal guarantees from the fire department.
Good evening, Mayor Spence, members of council. Uh, just one item that I'm bringing forward today as we discussed at the, uh, July eighth committee of the whole meeting, which is in regards to replacing the flooring upstairs at the fire hall. We did get three quotations back, uh, for pretty much identical two-by-two-foot modular commercial carpet, uh, as selected by the firefighter flooring committee and adopted by a vote of the firefighters at our quarterly meeting July third. Um, I enclosed where we're at as far as the budget goes, um, although all three tenders are below budget. The, I'd like to bring forward that recommendation for, uh, patina floor and decor, uh, be awarded the replacement carpet.
Motion, Counselor Schramm?
I would like to move that the flooring replacement for the fire hall upstairs area is awarded to patina floor and decor of Warman for the amount of ten thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars plus taxes.
Secondaire, Counselor Beck, and is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Now, motion to, uh, administration reports, Counselor Peterson?
I'd like to make the motion that the administration reports for July fifteenth, twenty nineteen be accepted and filed as presented.
Okay, and a second, Counselor Jones? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, moving down to mayor's report. Most of it's just for your information. Is there any questions about report? Are you know, is there a motion? And there's also attached the soon the city mayor's call, because I'll, I'll come to report, and that's just for your information as well. So we have a motion to file it. Counselor Philchuck?
I'll make the motion that the mayor's report for July fifteenth, twenty nineteen be accepted as presented.
And a second for that? Counselor Beck, and any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, council on the table, starting with Counselor Philchuck.
Okay, a couple things. Uh, first of all, uh, there's actually a symposium in Moose Jaw that, uh, is looking at governance, um, infrastructure and public safety. I know Counselor Beck had mentioned before, and I, I thought of executive development, but I, I looked a little more into it, and it was, when I saw the public safety aspect, I, I thought it'd be a perfect, uh, perfect match. Because it's a symposium where it's gonna be some presentations and then discussions that go along with it, so. I think it, and, and it really, it's called the future of mu- municipal development. So I'm hoping to get councils asking for approval to go to this conference, so if there's gonna be a motion.
Do you have a motion? Counselor Beck, so your motion is to?
Uh, is, is to have, uh, you know, certainly, uh, a deputy mayor, uh, Gary Philchuck, you know, to attend the, the symposium in Moose Jaw, uh, September twenty eighth through
July eighth.
No, pardon, July twentieth through thirtieth.
Okay, a second for that. Counselor Peterson, any more discussion?
Yeah, um, you know, certainly with, with this, I mean, like, it does look at, at, you know, say all, uh, you know, let's say quite a few different aspects of, uh, of municipal development, uh, you know, and whatnot, so I'm like, I don't know if there's any other, you know, you know, counselors that are, you know, that, you know, that they should be opened up to. So I, I suppose I leave that on the floor, if there's any other names to come forward for that.
Okay, anything else? All in favor?
Okay, uh, I had the opportunity to go to the premier's reception, and, uh, that was the last minute thing that, uh, that, uh, Mayor Spence, I think there was a communication miss, uh, from, from their department to Mayor Spence, and just after the meeting last time, I had an opportunity to go. Uh, first of all, started talking with Mark Fisher from the commander for the RCMP for the province, and then, uh, actually your boss, uh,
for the RCMP for the province, and then actually your boss, uh, Scott Bandev with the CEO of Tuap. Uh, so, but there's many people. Gordon White came up to me, it's, it's interesting when you're at something that's at a national level that all those provincial people that you've met now come and it's like you, they know you, so it's, so a few different people had a chance to talk with them, can shovel they off, and uh, I, I wanted to make sure I talked to a few of the people. The one that wasn't there that I really want to see was Mr. Keating, and so I actually reached out to him after and, 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 uh, just said, I missed you at this, he said he'd be at the supper the following night, and we had a quick discussion about, that he said the next step, actually, that uh, the, the grants were approved by the federal government, and now the full grant was being, our, our full proposal was being sent, which he was hoping would mean good things to happen, so. I mean, at the end of the day, it's, uh, now it's, the feds have approved, now it's, uh, our full one's gone through, and, and that's where it's at. So, hopefully, something, something works there. After that, I, I think the other one I want to mention, that since our last meeting, we, we had a Canada Day, and I think the Canada Day celebration, uh, Counselor Tulley was also there. It was interesting, uh, this time that after giving an introduction and talk, it, it asked about the free cake and uh, there's a run, a, a block long of, of kids running over to the cake. This is the first year that I can remember that we ran out of cake in, in, in the hour and a half, just sort of hanging around there and, and cutting cake. But there was a lineup, a block long, and it was just excited kids, it was a perfect day, it turned out to be a little stormy the rest of the day, but uh, Canada Day in Warman's really turned out to be quite an event, and, and with our young families, that I appreciate all that the recreational department's doing to make that a special day here in Warman. And I also want to mention, went to the Suma Golf, uh, and, uh, Counselor Beck was there and, 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 uh, our state manager was there. Again, good, good opportunity to, uh, meet some of the people and, and talk with some of the things that are happening around the province, and uh, so, good discussions, good day, uh, and not too far away, Spiritwood, we didn't put a proposal to put it in, uh, Warman. The next opportunity, there was, there's two other, two other proposals that came forward, and, but we're looking for the, the year after that. The, the, so that, I think, three years from now, we're looking at the opportunity to, to bring it to Warman.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Counselor Schramm?
I have nothing to add.
Okay, Counselor Peterson?
Um, I guess the only thing I wanted to mention is a kind of a kudos out to the Recreation Department for the, like, once again this year for the flowers now around our community to make our community look so beautiful. Um, we had family in for Canada Day, and, and that was one thing that they made special mention to me about, was the, that, uh, they always enjoy coming to visit and seeing the flowers everywhere and how beautiful our community is.
Thank you, Counselor Jones?
Nothing to report.
And Counselor Beck?
Yes, uh, so things have been fairly quiet for meetings, uh, but I have been busy with, uh, setting up the Northwest Region's, um, uh, Suma Regional Meeting, so that is set for October third in Duck Lake, Saskatchewan, so, um, with this here, I, I, um, I have lined up some, some speakers and some presenters, uh, and the sign-up for that there should be made available through Suma, uh, towards the end of this month. So, I just thought I'd, uh, put that out there, um, hopefully everybody here, um, could make it out to attend. And also, from Suma, a urban update was, uh, sent out today, so there, there were certainly a few discussion points in there. There's some landfill closure, um, environmental assessment programs that, uh, you know, that was noted. There is, uh, targeted sector support for collaboration, and also a traffic, uh, safety fund grant and whatnot. So, uh, I think the closing based on that are September twentieth to September thirtieth, so, um, you know, certainly some opportunities there for our administration to look at. Um, as well, the provincial government, uh, did, did announce a household hazardous waste products, uh, uh, stewardship, uh, regulations, so it was done on, uh, on July fifth, so I just wanted to highlight that aspect. And, um, the golf tournament was, was well organized, and, um, you know, uh, quite honestly, that was the first time that I had actually played uh, there on, on the Spiritwood course, and it was, you know, just really in this course to kind of be out on, uh, some of those were definitely challenging. But, uh, uh, you know, just like Gary had mentioned, um, it was really good for, you know, for networking, you know, in that coming. So, um, you know, certainly there was quite a few CEOs there and, um, you know, some counselors, so that was really good. And also wanted to highlight the, the July twentieth to thirtieth, uh, symposium, so, I, Gary, I will see you there.
Okay, thank you, and just to mention after council meeting today, of council, and Brad, if you could stay back just for a few moments? Okay, um, below we have correspondence, does someone want to make a motion to file these pieces of correspondence? We do have a couple requests there, Counselor Peterson?
I'd like to make the motion that the following correspondence, a thank you card from Amy, thank you card from Rebecca, a letter from Maya, the twenty nineteen celebrity dinner sponsorship request, and the Prairie River Reconciliation Committee report. Letter of support and funding requests be filed as read.
Okay, uh, so, a secondar for that? Okay, and then I guess we'll just open it up, because there is two requests in there too, so first of all, I'll give us the all in favor and all the requests.
Yeah.
Okay, so all in favor, just follow them. And then I guess we'll start with the celebrity dinner request.
Um, now, this, uh, this request, I remember at, talking about this before, but I went through past requests from last year, and there wasn't one in our, in our minutes, so I, I'm kind of agreeing with Counselor Beck is that we didn't really approve this last, we didn't approve it because it was in the budget. And I just, uh, I guess I'm kind of, I'm also asking for administration to, I know this is the last year for this, um, but if, if we do something like this again, I would really appreciate to have this request earlier than just a month before. Um, because it puts, it puts a little pressure, um, because if we were to say no, who's gonna sponsor the speaker? Uh, if you say no, then they're scrambling to find another sponsor, um, and then it, um, because I personally agree with, uh, this celebrity dinner and auction, and it's been a success in the past. We have pictures all down the hallway of, you know, what this means to us. I would just, it just creates a little bit of a, uh, a flow here that, um, we didn't, we don't really need to have, and, um, in conflict, so I just, uh, we just appreciate a little bit earlier against, uh.
So, going back to your first comment, that you thought that it was a part of the budget and what we didn't have a formal request, is that so?
Yeah, it's because I, I checked all of our minutes up to the, up to last year of March, and there is no request for this. So, I'm, unless I'm, I missed it, I've looked over our minutes and I'm-
I, I do remember that we talked about it last year.
I'm sure we talked about it.
And the reason there wasn't a formal motion is because it was considered that when we made the motion to have it included in the budget, that that's where the approval is.
Okay, so, uh, Counselor Beck?
Um, uh, just to bring forward, uh, some of the labor that I had done on, on, on this particular question. Uh, with this year, I did contact our finance, uh, manager, uh, just earlier today, you know, just to confirm that this was already, you know, say, in our budget. And, um, and with this year, I did get confirmation on that. So, you know, certainly with this, um, you know, my understanding is, is that, uh, you know, that this is still coming forward to the floor just, just for, let's say, like, like, virtually for transparency, you know, purposes and whatnot, so, um, you know, that there, I'm like, I certainly do understand. Is the motion necessary? It actually isn't, because it is already, you know, say, approved and, you know, you know, in that heading, so, um, you know, honestly, I, I'm like, I could go either way on this, but I do want to second, uh, you know, the points that are, uh, made by, by Counselor Schramm, that, you know, that this is a very important, you know, say, event for, you know, for Warman, so.
Okay, so.
I, I would like to suggest in the future that I, I, I see kind of both sides of it, that you can have it in the budget and that's where the approval is, or you can just budget for it in the sponsor, in your, what you're gonna have is set, set aside for sponsorships and things like that. But have a formal motion on the books to, for transparency's sake, to, to show that it's there. I can go either way, I, I think probably I'd lean to the second option myself.
Well, at least it's there, for the agency.
Yeah.
I, I would agree, you want it there.
Gee, so who wants to make that motion? Counselor Jones?
I'll move, for the City of Warman, to be the speaker sponsor at the Warman Sports and Cultural Village two thousand and twenty Celebrity Dinner.
Two thousand and nineteen.
Oh, you're right, it is two thousand and nineteen. Two thousand and nineteen Celebrity Dinner and Auction at the cost of sixty-five hundred dollars, excuse me. Maybe we are well in charge here, Ken.
Secondar, Counselor Peterson, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, and then we also have the, um, PRRC request for support letter in front of us. And also, I think they have the different sponsorship opportunities for their conference. Is there anyone that's ready to make a motion there?
I just have a question, is this two different requests? One for the conference and one for their support? Is that what I'm getting from this?
I, well, I think Warman does support in lots of different ways, I think it's mainly probably for the conference.
I, I was just gonna make a comment first, and, and I think just a little bit of background too, that we hosted the conference last year and we, we didn't charge for the facility, so, and I think now Martinsville's taking that lead on in, uh, hosting it next, this year. So, I think if anything, it would be, and, and when we are hosting any of our committee meetings in Warman, we also take the expense on for Warman. So, so I think in some ways, those things have all been covered by, uh, you know, having one of our, having the mayor's, what, the co-chair, I think has part of that, but it's also, uh, we all, also become a hub with us and, uh, the regional college working together with a lot of, a lot of the initiatives happening, so I think if, if anything, it would be for the second one and specifically for the conference if we wanted to.
And we have some levels here, that's not saying that that's the amount that we need, that we need to contribute. Warman is a good, is a good supporter of this committee, so I just leave it to council to decide on what level they'd like to support or not.
I would just like point of clarification that this doesn't get confused with the PRRC.
Well, we've had that conversation.
Yeah, so, so the Physician Root, uh, uh, the Physician Recruitment Retention Committee,
Yes.
PRRC is actually the WPRRC, so we're putting Warman in front of that, and, you know, just to create a little bit of separation. Yes, it's only one letter, and, yeah, it can easily be confused pretty quick, so, thank you very much.
This is for Prairie Rivers Reconciliation Committee. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'm, I'm fine with it actually being tabled and really waiting until, this is something that I would like to maybe put into next year's budget. That's something that, now, we've had two, two conferences in a row, uh, you know, we, we hosted one, now one is in Martinsville. If we see the success of that, then this is something that we maybe look at how we can contribute in that way, since I, we, we did put a lot into the conference last year.
So, is that twenty-four, twenty-one? So, right now, in our budget, we have twenty-one thousand, or, twenty, no, twenty-one hundred for reconciliation. Left, left, for the year.
Now, that there would, would certainly include registrations and, uh, and things like that and whatnot, so, um, you know, with this year, like, I actually do agree with Gary. Um, you know, like there again, because like the, like the request here hasn't been specific, we haven't really seen it kind of develop yet. Um, you know, I, you know, like, there would still be time to, you know, to do sponsorship at, at, like, at a rate, if, if it does become apparent. Um, for me, I, I'm like, I did actually really struggle with this one, because it, it wasn't really clear as to, you know, what, what this is gonna do for us, or, you know, let's say, like the benefits of it. Obviously, there's a big contrast between that and, and the, and the sports celebrity dinner, you know, dinner, for example, so. Um, with this year, I'm, I'd be, you know, um, happy to, to hold off for now, and look at it if, if the request is, is certainly needed closer to be done.
Okay, and everyone else fine with that? Okay, then we can move on, um, we've already had a motion for correspondence, so we'll move to other reports. Do we have a motion there? Counselor Beck?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion that the Trinity Report for June, uh, twenty nineteen and the RCMP Media Report for June twenty-fourth to July eighth, twenty nineteen be accepted and filed as read.
Do we have a secondar for that? Counselor Peterson, any further discussion? Counselor Schramm?
I just have one comment, and that is, I, you know, we, we have a cons- some of our residents are hesitant to, um, report. And I think that's, that our, our manager has made that clear to us, that sometimes people don't want to make a report or get involved. And sometimes, I guess, when you get one of the RCMP's media release where they, there was an erratic driver and all the driver got was a warning, I said that sometimes plays into the fact that if, when they do report and nothing's done, it creates this, well, if I say anything, it's not gonna do any good anyway. So, I, I guess I, I just want clarity from our staff sergeant, is, what is the pers- like, if you were asking for residents to, to make a nine-one-one call and to report, and then nothing happens, um, we're creating that, a, a, a situation where it, it supports them being, uh, not responding and not helping, so I, I, I guess I kind of want a little bit of understanding from the staff sergeant, what's, I mean, is this normal, is this what happens? I, I guess I'd like some clarity.
Okay.
I know in the past, uh, Staff Sergeant Air has said many times that, that, um, they're reluctant to lay charges in a situation like that if they haven't witnessed it themselves. And I know I've reported, uh, some incidents in the past and, and gotten that same response back by the member who attended that we didn't see the incident, we couldn't prove who was driving, so all we're doing is issuing the warning.
It's kind of a catch twenty-two, we go up there.
Well, and that's, that's what we did here at the protection meeting too, that, that they are looking for information, but sometimes it's playing, playing it together where, where some of the incidents are happening, and, and I recommend if people don't wanna be public, use something like Crime Stompers, they can, they can send it in anonymously. If they wanna be more public with it, they will take statements, but a lot of times, that's the difference, is that if it's going to go to that next level, because it, police will not give a ticket that the, that, that they don't think will, there'll be a conviction, and that's, it's really a crown direction too.
Well, okay, but I, but when we give them a, you know, a community nuisance bylaw, will they, will they follow through with that? Like, I guess it, I'm-
If they see it.
If they, if they see it, but-
They can't always be there.
They can't always be there, and when, when we start asking for residents to do the reporting, um, I, I don't know, it's just, it's hard to, you have a comment, so, oh.
Yeah, I, uh, I agree with your comments that, um, it's easily for me to contact, because you're talking the June twenty-eighth, the three fifty, and ask the sergeant why a warning was provided rather than why I can certainly give that answer for you, because it is a, I mean, we're asking the public to provide that information, and we should know the circumstances behind why it was a warning versus a charge, and I'm sure he should be able to provide that too, so.
Okay, so then can, are you gonna contact him?
Yeah.
And then you'll get back to us through email?
Yeah, you bet.
Okay, anything else? Okay, all in favor? Okay, moving down, we have communications, Aaron.
Okay, so even though it's summer, um, we're still doing the business visits in town. And we had a couple last week that went very well, um, pretty little pieces and tail and dog and cat grooming. And we've got a couple more dates scheduled this month. And we've got a couple more dates scheduled this month for some more business visits. It's a little bit challenging with some business owners taking vacation and booking them, but we'll get it done. We'll have some interesting reporting back later this month, or I guess next month. The summer photo showcase is going, it's just awesome. If you haven't had a chance to check out the photos on Facebook, they're also on the website. And I have to say, there are quite a few really beautiful pictures, so it really is nice to see. There's only one photo that I have not put out, because it's a picture of the fox tail weed. And I just wasn't quite sure, because I know there's been a few people commenting on how prolific it is throughout town, so that's the only one I've held back. And, yeah, for your information, I've provided the social media stats since our last meeting last week.
Well, thank you, Aaron, for coming up with that summer photo, photo showcase. I've seen the pictures, and some of them are really nice, that's something to use for future, so thank you for coming up with that.
I think people are having fun with it.
Does anyone have any questions of Aaron's report? Any suggestions or ideas for, for any posts for the next couple weeks? Or anything that you'd like to see, maybe relate to our public? I think, Aaron, you've been doing an excellent job, there's, there's lots of news on there, lots of information, things that people need to be aware of, you're putting out there, so thank you for that. Is there anything that anybody around the table thinks should be added, or are we okay with what we're seeing? Not hearing anything?
I, I really like the business visits, like, again, I, I realize that that's ongoing, but there's so many businesses that, there's many that you haven't gone to yet, and I think they appreciate you coming to their door and, and providing them that opportunity for some publicity. So, I, I think those are always great, and I, I think that'll build the whole Facebook following too, when you have that.
For sure.
And Twitter, it could actually be done.
Okay, hearing nothing? Thank you.
Thank you.
Presented for July fifteenth, twenty nineteen.
Do you have a secondor for that? Council Jones, any further discussion there? All in favor? Okay, City Council approval, motion please. Council Philip Chuck?
I'll make the motion to approve the city accounts presented by checks numbered two, twenty thousand three fifty-three to twenty thousand five twenty-seven for the total amount of five hundred and thirty-three thousand three hundred and seventy-seven cents, and payroll vouchers numbered nine thousand seventy-eight to nine thousand two hundred and forty-seven, the amount of two hundred and seven thousand twenty dollars and sixty-seven cents for July fifteenth, twenty nineteen.
Do you have a secondor for that? Council Beck, any further discussion? All in favor? And a motion to adjourn. Council Jones?
Move to adjourn the July fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen regular meeting of council.
And a secondor, Council Philip Chuck? All in favor? Okay, thank you.